Good afternoon. My name is Raymond Skinner and I'm Chairman of the DCHA Stabilization and Reform Board, otherwise known as the Star Board, and I'd like to call this meeting to a halt. This is our regular monthly meeting of the DC Housing Authority being held today, May fourteenth, twenty twenty five. This meeting is being held via Zoom video conferencing and the board is here in the conference room in person. The time is one oh two P M. I'd like to start out and ask for a moment of silence to allow for some personal reflections. Thank you. Today's meeting is our regularly scheduled meeting and we have invited members of the public to sign up to speak via our website, or those who would like to just view the meeting can do so live via the DCHA website linked to Facebook Live. The Board of Commissioners welcomes constituent inputs on matters of public concern and offers you today an opportunity to express your views during the public testimony portion of this meeting. However, we require that members of the public who attend our meetings abide by certain rules of the forum to allow the board to complete its business. For this virtual meeting, D H C, DCHA asks that you remain muted until you are instructed to speak. Members of the public cannot engage in any disruptive conduct, loud threatening, or abusive language during the meetings. This includes any loud outbursts or shouting during times when you have not been invited to speak. Anyone who violates these rules will be removed from the virtual meeting immediately. Serious or repeated violation of the rules may result in your being barred from speaking at future board meetings. However, we do appreciate your interest in the matters before us today and thank you in advance for abiding by these rules of conduct. At this time, I would ask for a roll call vote to determine if we have a quorum.
Sure. Denise Blackson?
Present.
Thank you. Rosa Berberich? Libra Clay?
Present.
Thank you. Jim Dickerson?
Present.
Thank you. Ronnie Harris? Katrina Jones?
Yes.
Thank you. Melissa Lee?
Present.
Thank you. Chris Murphy? Jennifer Reed?
Present.
Thank you. Luisa Sella?
Present.
Thank you. And Chairman Skinner?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, I would like the Commissioners to consider the minutes of the April ninth, twenty twenty five board meetings. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
To move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any? Let the minute stand approved as presented. Okay, the next order of business is our executive director's report and I'm going to call on Director Keith Pettigrew for his report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, getting into the executive survey and the numbers, you know, we've also, I had the team move up the utilization numbers of the voucher program as well to the summits, because you guys don't have to look at it before they get back in the book, but for property management operations was around eighty-three percent. We, you guys probably remember, at the end of the year, the numbers changed slightly because we did a reconciliation, an annual reconciliation. But what we decided to do, the goal said, let's do this every quarter now, just to make sure that we're not missing anything by waiting for a longer period of time. And so you know, this number dropped a little bit, that's because of reconciliation, as well as some other things that normally happen in the normal course of business. We had forty-six units come back online that were offline with HUD. And one of the things that we started doing that we realized before the end of last year was we got a list of all of the units that were already offline, but more importantly, trying to identify when they were coming back into the portfolio. Because that affects your inventory and that affects our numbers from utilization. And so what I attempted to do was, the reason why we did that, because my main thing now is when we have attorney's units, the ones that are coming back online soon, I want to now turn them off before they hit us, so we can lease them up as quick as possible. They were coming back before not being rehabbed and they were dragging down the numbers and our ability to lease up. So, so just so you know, you should start to see this number go up a little bit, but it's a better coordinated effort now with the units coming back online, just so you know.
Can you say that again? Sorry. The part about the coordinating around units, so what was happening before that they weren't?
Before what was happening was, the units, we weren't being told when they were coming online until they hit us. And when they hit us, they were still in bad condition. Remember, when they get pulled offline, then they can sit there for two, maybe three years longer, depending upon what the reason is for being offline. But when it came back.
When you say pulled offline, is that HUD approving it to be offline, does that mean, okay, all right?
Yes, yes, yes. So when they were coming back to us initially last year, they were still in bad condition. And so my thing was, okay, guys, this doesn't make any sense. Give me a list of all these units and when we expect them to come back online, whether it's this year, whether it's next year, whatever month it is. And I said, now, let's prioritize the units that are coming back soon to get rehabbed. So when they come back to us now, they're already rehabbed, and now we can just put them in a rotation to be leased up as opposed to bringing them back as a damaged unit. And now it's still vacant because nobody can live it. That's what we do.
So what criteria does HUD use to bring it back online? Why would they bring back online?
It's a timeframe.
Units that are still?
It's just a timing thing.
So there's an automatic trigger in their system that allows units to come back online when they go offline?
Yes. Okay. When you put the request in, generally, you know, the max is usually a two-year period. But if it's not for one of the criterias, like in our move to work modernization or something or another, it's off the contract. So if a contract says we'll have this done in six months and you don't get started till later, it's coming back online till we provide them a new contract to be offline.
Okay, I really appreciate this because it helps clarify that you are dealing with units coming back online that were offline when none of you were around, and so that's a part of like the catch-up work that's happening.
Yes. Now we manage it better.
Okay.
Okay.
Rehab it and lease it up right.
That's very helpful, really is. So, so for all of those units, you have almost a timeline for when they're supposed to come online?
That's what I get.
Kind of manage accordingly.
That's it.
So how does that? Is it possible then that we would be able to see if we wanted to win a full view of how many units should be online by certain dates based on that timeline and how you plan against that timeline?
Yep. Okay. We can provide that for you, because all it is is timing. And we meet with HUD too, to talk about these units. James Brown is our contact with HUD. We talked to him about some of this and we had a meeting about this that was late last year. And I'm like, James, you need to get in front of this. And he says, no, Keith, I agree with you. So here we are.
And I'm only jumping in because we have authorized a number of different vehicles for capital improvements, capital construction. As you are looking at this pipeline that's coming online and you're coordinating better, are you finding that you have sufficient dollars in all of these different vehicles? Or is that a part of what you are assessing? And so should we be expecting that you might come back and say, hey, actually, based on this pipeline and our analysis, we might need more money in this pot or that pot? How are you?
That is a possibility, given the fact that now we've coordinated in a way that we can now forecast.
Okay.
Because before, it wasn't being forecasted.
Okay.
And so now that we're forecasting it, now we'll take a look at what Jackie gets back, we'll run some numbers to see where we are with some of the units.
That would be a great update to bring to our capital committee.
I'm sorry, I have one more question. Is there kind of a normal target in terms of percentage of units that are online versus offline? Because I understand that there's always going to be something that you have to pull offline and there's a target to get as many online. Is there kind of an average or where you expect, where you would say, okay, we're in a good place now because this many of our units are currently online? Do you really shoot for a hundred percent?
Well, ideally, you want to shoot for a hundred percent. And it really depends upon what you got going on. Remember now, some of these units are offline because they're going to be part of development projects or what have you. So, so you really can't define it in that way.
Okay.
You just sort of roll with it. But a hundred percent of what we're able to rehab and get online, that's how, that's how it counts it. But some of them may not come back online because they're already packaged up in the deals.
Yep. Thank you.
So obviously, the vacant unit numbers went up because units came back, but they have been rehabbed. Forty-six units that came back online in Harvard Towers, thirty-nine have been turned completely. So we're just looking to get ramped up in terms of lease ups. Carolyn now has started to get her sea legs under her, and so they're aggressively going and doing these lease up events every weekend now. So we're excited about that. So hopefully, these numbers should start to increase. Also, just so you all know, and we'll probably touch on this a little bit more in the subcommittee meeting, especially the Operations Committee meeting, is that at some point, we really need to start, well, we have already started talking about it, but we need to lay out the plans for the waitlist opening. Because we need to refresh that waitlist. So now to get a fresh pool by site basis, because that will help us a lot. Because a lot of people are turning their units because they don't want to live in certain areas. But the site-based waitlist will now provide us with people who want to be at these specific properties, and that should help us lease up a lot faster. On the voucher side of the house, the numbers are creeping up. We're ninety-three percent for the federal. L R S P remained the same at ninety-three. And then the local DHS vouchers creeped up to eighty-seven percent. So we're pushing. We did, we do a bi-weekly, the bi-weekly? Bi-weekly with DHS? Is that right? I always get that confused with the bi-weekly.
Every other week.
Poster twice a week, right? So we meet with Director Pierre, we start to talk about how we can streamline this process for the local vouchers. And so we've laid out a flow chart that we share with her, and they have a flow chart too. So now we're going to meet next, start next week to hash out, you know, where we see the bottlenecks are. I think I know where they are, but I don't want to say it out loud yet until I talk to her about them. But we've got it to the point where we've actually identified the average number of days per step two. So we're breaking it down. I know that's what you and I have to talk about. That's what I heard, so.
Making my day.
Because I heard.
Yes.
And Sheila was like, listen, I'm in. That's what we go with that. But the numbers are creeping up and, you know, they got a lot of vouchers on the street, but that's a good thing. You know, as we continue to try to get to a hundred percent utilization.
What about for the, what is it? This F R S P program, those, how are we doing on that?
So they're part of the federal number, which is ninety, ninety-three percent right now. But Anton, do you have a breakdown of the, of the F R S P? Was it in the back of the book?
Yeah.
There are a lot.
You know what? And in the future, now, let's put that in the summary too, so you don't have, right? That way, they ain't going to look to the back of the book. But can you give an update on where we are with it?
Give a real time update right now. So the good news is, we've touched, that's in DHS, we've touched, we've touched as of this week. So the numbers may not reflect the board book, but we get a weekly report from, excuse me, from our partner. And the good news again is we've touched one thousand two hundred and fifty-three families of the thirteen hundred. So that's, in my opinion, that's great. Of that number, we've issued it was jumping around on me without my permission. We've issued we've leased up four hundred and thirty-five families and we've issued one thousand one hundred and one vouchers. So we're moving in the right direction.
Yep.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Keep moving.
Took us a while to kind of get the flow going.
Yeah, yeah.
Sounds like we're there now.
Again, but the level of detail in the back of the book looks amazing. And a part of why the numbers for the DHS MOU utilization jumped up was as we were looking at the numbers, we realized that we were not accounting for the price of vouchers in that. Yeah, so like, you know, going from forty-three to eighty-seven is a huge shift. And a part of that was like recognizing that we weren't accounting for all of the stuff. So it's just been so helpful. I know when you started, you told us, hey, I can't rely on the data that I'm seeing in the system. And it took a while for us to get to this place. So really appreciate the level of detail that your team is tracking the work and executing.
I'm just glad you guys are happy. That's the goal. The goal was to keep you guys in a good space. And the resident service stuff is the general stuff. Resident Services continues to do a lot, have a lot of activities for the residents. Speaking of that, and you may remember, last summer, we started the rebuilding communities initiative. To start rebuilding communities, get people out and about. And so over the winter months, we did all of the senior facilities. You know, they were, they were sort of shut in and we brought some food and we did events at all of the senior properties during the winter. And so now we're about to go back into the summer. And so we're going to be sending you guys a calendar of all of the outdoor events for all of the properties that we did last year. And we added some other properties. I know some properties were a little upset because they didn't, we didn't touch them last summer, but that's because we couldn't do everybody. So we're trying to make sure now that some of the ones that didn't get touched last year are definitely a priority to get touched this year, as well as some of the other ones that may be repeaters because they have great space and a lot of kids at these properties. So just so you know, so we're excited about that.
Make sure that you send those out to the, to the board. So, you know, some of us might want to be able to attend some of those events. I didn't get a chance to do it last year.
Yeah.
Because I was hobbling around. This year, I'm in better shape.
So we're going to have a dunk tank. I'll volunteer, you volunteer. And one other I just want to note, there was a street naming ceremony last Friday for Ms. Karen Settle's mom, Pearl B. Settles, and I was honored to be asked to come and speak, say a couple words. She was obviously a board member years ago. Yeah, she was very active in the community, obviously. So it was a pretty nice event.
Okay.
So that taking into questions you all have.
Any other questions? What about some of the major capital redevelopment projects? Can you just give us, you know, thirty-second overview of where we are? What can we expect in terms of timing for the, for the, you know, like the next project that's going to be the major redevelopment?
So we won't know that until we sit down and talk to you guys and get it approved, right?
But we have some.
We got Berry Farms, like you were Berry Farms, very much leased up now, Dasbury. Park Morton's going to be coming online soon. It's my understanding is waiting on the full civic system. So we can start move those people in. And then Kinnaworth is already leased up, so.
Oh, really? Kinnaworth is fully leased up? Oh, wow. Okay.
Yeah. And so, but we are waiting.
So.
Did the demo on that, on those buildings over there, right?
Uh-huh. There's some, and simply.
Yeah.
This is at Kinnaworth?
Oh, and, yes, yes, as well.
There was a couple of families, we had to get them out of, wanted demo those buildings, get them out of there.
Folks are out of there. So now we're waiting on Section eighteen approvals from HUD.
Okay.
So that's our usual, that's our holdup on a lot of these issues.
So I know we have, what, four or five, maybe more pending at HUD for approval?
Oh, you mean the Section eighteen applications?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, for the general public who may not know what Section eighteen is, this is to get approval to redevelop certain properties.
Right. But it's more the demo disapplication that allows us to order subsidy that leads to, you know, approved to go ahead and then redevelop.
So we have no idea when HUD may or may not.
Actually, I had a call with them yesterday and they just have, they have a backlog. They've lost a lot of staffing, so.
I was going to ask you about that. What's your sense of kind of HUD, how HUD is doing? You know, they're supposed to be losing, what, fifty percent of their staff or something like that?
They've lost a good amount. And on the SAC side, which is the special application center that handles like the Section eighteen stuff, they, they lost a good amount. So yesterday, I know we've got several in the queue that, that we feel hopefully will be approved. But she couldn't even give us a timeframe of when we should receive any letters of a determination from applications at this time.
Yeah. It's, it's I don't know how to describe what's going on over there. Obviously, we meet with HUD once a week, so. It's, it's just very I don't know how to describe it.
Okay. But I mean, the people you're meeting with are career people.
Yes.
You guess expect to be there, but you just never know.
Yeah. A lot of people actually took the buyout.
Okay. And is there, I mean, there's a lot of issues. Is there a few that you're immediately concerned about that you're working with them on? Or is it just all up in the air right now, just one day at a time?
So we submitted, what was it, six or seven? So we're, all seven, we continuously talk to them about. So right now, that's the only ones we have in, so we're trying to get answers on, on all seven of those.
And it just slow go.
Slow go.
And then I think the other concern was also our reserves and
right, previously, right now, I think we're good. Amy, you may have more like on the reserves. And right now, our reserves are good for this fiscal year. We don't anticipate them capturing or coming back. And we never know what could happen, but I think we're good with our, our reserve dollars.
I mean, we're under continuing resolution, so there should not, if congressional will is followed in terms of appropriations, there should not be further issues with our reserves for this federal fiscal year. And we don't really know what will happen, starting with October one, which would be the next fiscal year.
Yeah. Laurel pretty much told us Tuesday that, you know, right now, where is the space, but without funding source. She does, direct point of contact in the field office.
Okay. Another question unrelated to that. Officer of Resident Services, first of all, I'm looking through the events and I think they're amazing events. I was wondering, is there a way, or maybe there's already a calendar that exists, but some of these events, if I was available, then I might try and come to it. Is there a way to kind of send us something, maybe once a month, to say, these are the things that are happening this month? Okay. And then also, for some of these, I even look and I say, gosh, I may have known some resources to be able to help with some of these events. Is there a way even further ahead to say, hey, these are some things that if you all know some resources, let us know so that we could, we could maybe pitch in and get some resources as well?
Okay. We'll take this out.
Okay, after no further questions for the executive director, we're going to move on to public testimony. And we'll start with resident testimony and then non-residents. Each person has three minutes with their testimony. And you can talk about any issues related to the housing authority, including the resolutions that are before us today. So I'm going to ask staff to call up the names of the persons who have signed up for public testimony, starting with residents.
Sure. First, we have Davion Bick. And for our residents, anyone who wants to find, you will get a notice to be promoted. So just give us a second while we promote you and star six to unmute yourself once you get promoted. Davion Bick? Forward. Next, we have former Commissioner Kenneth Council.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I want to bring up some issues. I heard what Director just gave his report, monthly report. I'm wondering, within the past two years, what do you all, or what have you all done to the nineteen sites that you've removed? It was fifty-two two years ago. You're down to thirty-three, so that's nineteen. What has happened to those nineteen properties or sites that you have removed? I've driven past Eleventh and Harvard, which is the assistant living Marigo. It's still empty. What are your plans with it? And I've heard some untruths told, but I'm not going to continue to come on here and try to dog you out or make you look like you're crazy. But one thing that I do know, a lie can't live. It only lingers. It has an ending and a beginning. Have a great day.
Thank you. Just for the record, we've not removed any, any sites.
We have not. I mean, Marigo was not on when we got here, so that's a vacant site, but we haven't removed any sites, units.
You say you have thirty-three, which is on ink print sites. There were fifty-two two years ago. You're down to thirty-three, so that's nineteen from fifty-two, which gives you thirty-three. So if you haven't removed anything, why are you saying you only have thirty-three sites?
So, Mr. Counsel, since I've been on the board for three years now, I guess when I started, the number that I was given and what I saw in all the documentation, there were, I think, forty-two or forty-four developments that.
Fifty-two. We came on, it was fifty-two. It's down to thirty-three.
Okay. Well, let's do this. We'll, we'll go back and we'll confirm how many actual sites we have.
Thank you.
Publish that. Okay, thank you.
And Chair, in the board book on page one, I mean, in the whole book on one forty-eight and one forty-nine shows all the projects.
All right, next.
Next, we have Patricia Malloy.
Good afternoon, everyone. I hope you can hear me.
Yes, we can. Good afternoon.
Okay, my name is Patricia Malloy, and I'm a former Lincoln Heights Resident Council President, now a project-based voucher holder at the Strand Residency. Before I begin my testimony, I would like to thank Director Pettigrew, Andre Johnson, and Mr. Tyree for keeping me informed of the events and planning for Lincoln Heights. Again, thank you. I have a few questions. Do DCHA plan any further communication to public housing residents regarding the ACOG plan? For example, which I think is more important to me, is about the community service requirements. Also, how is DCHA tracking contact information for public housing residents who have been relocated? Also, do the Star Board have bylaws? If not, do you have guidance policy or scope of work? Also, what is happening with the citywide advisory board? Do they still have meetings? Do they submit comments on the ACOG plan? And lastly, properties that are undergoing relocation and redevelopment, the residents are going through mental stress and depression. Have DCHA considered getting counselors to assist residents with this? I am aware of one resident of Park Morton that is very depressed, dealing with the relocation and fear of property being misplaced. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Malloy. I want to have.
I'll be gentle.
Yeah.
Yes, I got a lot of things for you.
But can you talk about the ACOG specifically, and how residents will get additional chances to comment on the ACOG?
Yes, like, so, Ms. Malloy, just so you know, I got wind that you all wanted to extend the time to review the ACOG and the admin plan. And so we met with HUD on Tuesday and we're talking about it because that's the last piece of the closeout of everything. But what we agreed to do was a forty-five-day extension. So we have forty-five more days for you guys to provide comments and feedback and everything else. So, but I'll be reaching out to you to let you know that, as well as talking about some of the other things that you raised, so I can take care of that stuff for you as well, okay?
Thank you.
And in order to provide that forty-five days, we have to do another resolution to extend the time, which is, which is later on our agenda. And just so you know, Ms. Malloy, the Star Board does have bylaws.
Just to clarify, we're doing a resolution today to extend the current ACOG so that we can reopen the public comment period for the new ACOG. So that's just to, just to clear it up. Sorry, because it's all very confusing. Maybe I created more confusion. Sorry. Next, we have next, we have Linda Brown. Linda Brown. Moving forward, next we have Donna Towns. Moving forward. Miss, Miss, Miss Towns, if you're there, star six to unmute yourself, I'm saying that we have promoted you so that you can speak.
Hello?
Yeah.
Hi, Ms. Towns.
How you doing?
Good.
My name is Donna Towns, Park Morton resident. And, um, I'm finally able to get on this Board of Commissioners meeting. I haven't been on the Board of Commissioners meeting for the whole year. So anyway, and it was a delay just then because it took some time for the Zoom button, I mean, the button to unmute to come up. And in the past, I've never seen that unmute button, but I'm thankful I'm here to speak today. Um, I would just like to say, I would like to thank Ms. Wickliffe first and foremost, because, um, during our, during our meeting in, in last year, she removed the additional balance. First, the May twenty-seventeen, May tw- March twenty-eighteen, nonbacked rent charges were removed. Thank goodness, that was such a weight on my, on my, on my mind. And also, Ms. Wickliffe, um, removed the additional balance that was on my account. She says she did it in good faith, I appreciate it. But I would like to say that additional balance was charged on my account when my daughter was a minor. If you look at page fourteen of the tenant ledger, you can see, um, the time period, and she was a minor. And, um, it took like three or so more years for them to actually put that charge on my account, to put me through all that I've gone through. So I thank you, Ms. Wickliffe, for all you've done to help to bring this balance to zero.
Yes, thank you.
And also, I would like to say, um, I've, and, and I finally received the Housing Choice voucher application. I've submitted the application, but, um, I don't have a, a specialist, a Housing Choice voucher specialist, someone in which I can con- contact to check on the status of everything going on with the Housing Choice voucher. So I would like to ask if I can get, um, someone to contact me to keep me abreast of what's going on with the Housing Choice voucher. Because no Park Morton is going to be going down, is going to be moving to the other side. I just wa- I just need the voucher in my hand so I can have the opportunity to research where I would like to move to. So I look forward to that. And I also would like to say, and I also would, um, like to have a follow-up meeting with Director Pettigrew so I could bring issues in which I've dealt with as a Park Morton ma- uh, resident to his attention. And I thank you and, and ask for a resolution, so I thank you. And I look forward to hearing from you all again. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Towns.
Okay, look forward to hearing from you.
Okay. Ms. Wickliffe.
She cleaned out the houses.
I'm going to go back to, I understand Davion Vick is on. We are promoting you now in star six to unmute yourself. Davion Vick. Star six to unmute yourself if you, you need to accept the. Okay. We, we received your request. Next, I want to move forward to, uh, Paulette Matthews.
Hello, everybody, how y'all doing?
Uh, hi, Ms. Matthews.
Can y'all hea- can y'all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great, excellent. Um, I want to talk about a couple of things. And first, I'm going to start off with security of, um, DCHA police, uh, because that's the conversation I had last month. And, um, we just moved on to the next person. But I just have some concerns about actually their job function. And I would also like to request, because I did it, um, in the past, whereas though on the monthly meetings that the chief would speak, I think, um, Chief Moffitt, before he left, did it like twice. And then after that, it, it never came back again, now that we have Chief Reese. Because I'm concerned about, um, the staffing of the DCHA, how, when they ca- I can't speak on every neighborhood, but where I live at right now, how things are conducted. And whereas though it makes things a little more complicated than it necessarily has to be because of the approach of how things are done. Um, I also would like to, um, talk about the places where they venture to, I guess, to check. Whereas though for one, like, there's a, a ballroom, which they get out, they check that, I don't understand that because we have doors, whether or not they're breaking them or leaving something in the doorway. These buildings are supposed to be secured, but they're not secured. So I feel like checking the ballroom, which nobody is in, just driving up there and looking, I guess, and making sure that the door is locked. I, I feel as though until they get these doors secured throughout all of these properties, um, that they need to get out their cars and like walk into the buildings. And that's just how I feel. Um, I've had plenty of residents to come up and speak with me and reference other concerns of what be going on in the apartments because they are unsecured. And I see them often sometimes sitting for hours in one spot. And so I feel as though that they need to exercise that, um, their job to get out and come into these units. So I'm very concerned about that part. I'm also concerned about the cameras and who monitors the cameras? How often are they monitored? Who's actually monitoring them? If they're short-staffed and they have to have them out on these different properties? So those are like the concerns of mine, and I hope that they will be addressed because safety is first. And I, I'm just, I'm just worried about a lot of things that I see, and I feel like I don't want to go over it right now, but I just wanted to give y'all a little tidbit, what's going on when it comes to security? And how we can pray together, two or three can pray together, but if you're in your own neighborhood and you're out talking and the jumpouts come through whenever they want to, four or five deep intact, we get in different states or whatever, and they see you, and you might not have been doing nothing but just kicking it with your friends, but you can no longer really do that, and you walk off because that day, you're just not feeling them. It's not like you doing anything wrong or whatever, you just don't feel like going through the mess because one thing can lead to another. Um, it's how sometimes things are just conducted in the wrong manner, and it gets out of hand. And how that, these things could be avoided, try to work on that and what we could do to make it better, a better situation when this happens in the community. So I don't know what we can do, but I know that there's a better way in which it could be done because even when you walk away, you're still put with it because now they have the file to tell you to stop or hold on. And if you keep walking, that starts a whole nother issue. So I just think that's something that needs to be done in a better way. I don't know in which way, but I've seen so much to take place that there has to be a better way of how to do that. And outside of that, uh, gunshots. They took and put these, um, things on every unit to detect where the gunshots were coming from. Well, to me, sometimes I think it's a waste because of how the response time comes for them to come. And then sometimes it could be those officers that are, not just DCHA, MPD as well, sitting in places for hours at a time, and even when the gunshots go off, might not start moving until they hear other cars coming in. But I think it would have been benef- beneficial to have given us bulletproof windows and then those things up there. And then we have all of these cameras, and they're not getting anything. There's been certain, um, situations that have taken place that haven't been resolved because they can't see or something of that nature. So that's why my concern about these cameras and who's watching is a question and a concern. And I don't know if anybody can let me know or let us all know, because we're all affected by it, how we're going to work this thing out to be better than what it is at the present.
Uh, you raise a very serious concern. What I'd like to do, I can have the chief come to a future meeting and talk about, um, uh, their, their procedures and how they're, they're staffed and, and, and how they, uh, uh, staff the various, uh, properties. But again, thank you for raising that, it, it is a very serious issue.
And if I have a little bit of time, I don't know, because I'm not clocking myself, I want to talk about Bray Farm just for a minute. Um, we have the hour. I'm, I'm over my time.
So you're over time.
Okay, I'll talk about it with the director somewhere, it will get addressed. Thank you for your time.
So that concludes our resident testimony. Now going to move to our non-resident comment section. First, we have Bradwell Wills. Willis Bradwell. Okay.
Hi, um, good afternoon, thank you. Um, as a landlord, I've been given information from DCHA stating that no changes are being made to, to current existing contracts. However, for the month of May, my, uh, rental portion was decreased by two hundred dollars. Um, I never myself, I never put in a increase for, I never put a request for rent increase. Um, I've never given any type of notice that the rent, the rent was going down. I was never giving any cops to, uh, explain and justify why the rent was, uh, decreased out of nowhere. So I'm just curious as to why the rent was decreased by two hundred dollars randomly? And why no type of notice was, uh, provided for the decrease? And why no cops were also provided for the decrease in rent? Is it, is it, is it a normal process that goes on with DCHA?
So, um, we, we would have to have someone follow up, uh, with you, uh, to find out what happened. Um, we have your contact information, so I'll have one of the staff contact you.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we have Daniel Del Pallego. Next, we have Nathaniel Henry. Moving forward. Next, we have William Jordan. Mr. Jordan, he sent you a request to be promoted. You can accept in star six to unmute yourself.
Good afternoon, I hope everybody's doing well. I'm here to talk about, uh, Park Morton. Um, um, so first of all, you know, I'm, I'm trying to encourage the board to really take a more resident focus approach versus the object approach to really counting how residents' lives are improving economically and socially as you review these projects and not just warehousing people in units. Because I still hear that emphasis, and I think it's a problem. Um, so I wanted to talk briefly about Port, Park Morton Phase One. So last year around this time, um, notices went out to residents saying, get your paperwork in. We want to get you moved in the building by August of twenty-four. So now we are telling, no one's moved in, as far as I know, as of last week or so. And people are being told the first of June. So somehow, it's taken ten months to get people moved in after they were told to be ready to get their application and paperwork and move there. So to me, that's a massive fail. How can you plan your life and do things when that's what's going on? In the process, people have been asked to refill out their paperwork multiple times um, in order to keep up to date so they can move in. The rules for moving in and coming back, um, seem to be ad hoc. Um, or what we're having is trying to force people into not moving back based on what's in their interest, but in the way, places where the agency wants to fit people. And so I've watched a young person basically be penalized for getting a job um, and put in a more risky situation because they took the time to do what we asked them to do, to do better, and the process is penalized there. Uh, so based on that, I'm going to go back to my recommendations that I basically make every time. But I got a new one. I think Park Morton needs to be moved from the Committee on Capital Projects to the Committee on Resident Services to send a message, this is resident focus. The capital project committee just want to do bricks, and they're not really holding the agency accountable. Um, second, I think the project itself, the Park Morton project, needs to be moved directly under the director. Um, capital programs is just not getting it. Um, set third is, you know, we're going through all this Trump stuff, and I haven't heard a plan for how residents are going to survive this. What is the plan for residents? We should be in a position, no matter who's in office, for residents to do better. What is the resident plan? They're getting hit by Medicaid, they're getting hit by all kind of places. And it's not just housing. And then finally, I said earlier, I need to really hear some resident economic, social metrics from the agency and demand it from the board. I should know how many residents have improved their income, their family status, not just how many bricks we've moved around. So thank you, and I'll continue to bang that until we get a resident, uh, focused approach. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Jordan, uh, some, some very, uh, good comments.
So Chairman, that concludes your resident and non-resident testimony for today.
Okay, uh, so I want to thank all of you who, uh, came on and presented testimony. It's, uh, very important for, for the staff and board to hear, uh, comments and, and issues uh, brought up by the general public. Uh, and, uh, we will try to be as responsive as possible in, in focusing on those comments. Thank you. Now, we're going to move on to our committee reports. Uh, and I'm going to start with the Budget Audit Committee, um, Commissioner Reed. I know you have to leave early, so I wanted to get you in.
Thank you, uh, Chairman, and good afternoon, everyone. Um, we had a pretty brief meeting this month, um, where we really just focused on looking at where we were in terms of, um, just sort of budget to actuals for the year. Um, Heather gave us a status update on how they are implementing both the recommendations from the most recent audit, as well as, um, the technology, um, process improvements that are ongoing. Um, we also, uh, spoke about, and this is just a reminder, I mentioned this last meeting as well, summertime is when, um, Heather works with the DCHA team to build the budget for the upcoming fiscal year. And so we should. And so we should expect to begin discussions, I think, around August. Um, and then, uh, coming to the board for approval in September for F Y twenty-six. And that's all I have unless, uh, Commissioner Clay or Commissioner Lee have anything to add. Thank you.
Any questions from any other other committee? Okay, thank you. Um, so, uh, let's move on to the Resident Services Committee. Uh, Commissioner, uh, Blackson chairs that committee.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Um, I am Denise Blackson, the Chair of the Committee on Resident Services. And, um, just wanted to share, we were focused this month on the Move to Work Plan at the last meeting. The proposed Move to Work Plan for F Y twenty-six, and it was well attended. Um, want to thank Nicole Barrett for her great presentation. Um, D C H A policy, she's from the direct, she's the Director on Policy and the Move to Work Program. In case those of you who don't know, she is new to D C H A, um, for about six months now. But we had the pleasure of her presenting to us. And also, um, at this Resident Service Committee meeting, we had the resident leaders there, prior leaders, um, and current leaders to attend to hear about the proposed plan and also share the input on the plan. And it was well received. Um, that's what our focus was this month, just on Move to Work. And as always, a presentation by Officer Resident Services, sharing the many programs and resources and trainings that they are hosting at the Enhancement Center. So that's all I really have. I'm not sure. Is Ms. Harris on? Commissioner Harris on?
No, I don't believe she's on.
Okay, yeah, so she, she was, um, she attended this committee meeting. She's actually on the board, but she was there at that meeting. But just want to say, leaders was well engaged in that. And the other thing the committee focused on is the block by block. Well, we will have another presentation from Nicole on the Move to Work Plan, Program, the proposed plan, so.
When is, when is the next block by block?
The next block by block is next week on Thursday on the twenty-second of, um, May. Ten to four. And leaders are always welcome as well as commissioners. And we've opened this up to a couple of former leaders that's still advocates for the community. We've had them attend some of the Resident Service Committee meetings as well as the leadership meetings online.
Okay.
And in person.
Commissioner Blackson.
Yes.
Uh, Capital Projects Committee, I know Commissioner Murphy chairs that committee is not here. And I don't think there were any, um, resolutions, uh, from that, from that committee at, at the last meeting. Uh, so with that, we'll move on to the Operation and Administrative Services Committee chaired by Commissioner Jones.
So Edmund Op had a meeting on May second, a virtual meeting on May second. And one of the topics that was, I would say, um, was the highlight of the meeting was, was the A C O P. So we talked about it and we talked about it. We talked about it and how it was going to be, um, presented and the residents having another opportunity to present their comments. So today, there's a resolution to extend the current A C O P until, um, to allow for additional comments. And there was one other resolution discussed during that meeting. And I believe today going to be two other resolutions presented to the board, um, later on in this meeting. And our next meeting is May thirtieth. Yes.
So for, so with that, I'm, I'll just move in to the resolutions. The first one is Resolution twenty-five eleven, uh, regarding the publication of the eighth emergency proposed resolutions for the, um, admissions and continued occupancy plan. And our, um, General Counsel, Amy Glassman, uh, is going to, uh, present that resolution. I talked about it earlier. I think I got it wrong in terms of what we were doing. But I, I'd like for this to, to be final at some point.
We wish so.
The eighth iter- iteration of the.
So, yes, so, um, as was, as was stated earlier, um, we had planned to come, uh, today to ask, uh, the board to approve a new A C O P. Um, but, um, after receiving the resident request to extend our public comment period for longer, um, we have, as, as, as was stated earlier, we have, we've agreed to do that for the new A C O P. So it's going to be extended for an additional forty-five days. Um, but that means that we, we have to extend the current A C O P because it will expire in, in later May. So, um, so what we are coming to ask you to do is to vote to extend the current A C O P under emergency regulations that will technically extend it for another hundred and twenty days, but it is not our intent to, to do that, right? Um, we will, um, plan to, the, the plan is to, you know, after this public comment period, after this additional sort of forty-five days for folks to submit written comments, we will come back to the board likely at the July meeting, I think, which is July ninth, and, and ask for approval of the new A C O P. So that's, that's the plan.
Okay.
Um, with this additional public comment period.
And again, for, for the, the, the general public and particularly residents, we will be approving a new A C O P in July. But the A C O P will be updated annually. So if, you know, if you still have concerns, issues, comments, you'll have another opportunity next year to, uh, to bring those forward to, to the staff and to the board.
Well, and just, I mean, just to draw, I mean, so technically, the approval that we will ask for in July is to approve the new A C O P as emergency and proposed drug. So there will actually be an additional, I know, and there will actually be an additional public comment, thirty-day public comment period at that point. So there's actually another bite at that apple under the, for the new A C O P, um, at that point. But, but yes, to your point, I mean, we, we really, you know, our goal is to update this document every year. And, and it's, you know, so, so that it's a living document, we will have HUD requirements to update, I'm sure. But, um, you know, one of the things that, um, that we've seen in the comments received so far is that, you know, people have comments about existing poli-, they have many comments about existing policies. And some of those, we don't feel comfortable changing. And some of them, you know, could be considered for, um, for future revisions as well. So annually.
Okay, thank you. Um, any, any questions or concerns from the board before we consider the resolution?
We debated this extensively. Um, and, uh, one of the things that we, um, we talked through was it really feels like people are not, do not feel heard. And so how are we going to simplify our communication with people so that they understand that we are hearing them? Um, and so it just, if, so we, we even debated whether this should be ninety days or whether forty-five days would be sufficient. And so talk through just kind of how we need to improve communication so that we can go through with a forty-five days instead of a ninety-day, um, time period.
And we're working on some, we're working on a, we're working on an additional communications document to, to that end, um, that will be shared with the residents, um, in, in an effort to, to help, you know, help, help with that communications. Because I think, I think that, um, I think the brief summary of, of some of our discussions was that, you know, I think, I think a lot of what was commented on, as I said, is existing policy and a lot of the changes are really, in many ways, I thi-, I think resident positive changes, um, for, you know, for our residents, gives them a little more flexibility or a little more, you know, a little more freedom to, you know, from, from some regulations. So, but, but we want to work on that messaging so that it's more clear.
Okay. I ask a question about that. Um, in terms of making sure that they are being heard and that we are hearing what your comments are, will we, when we do have that, that final to vote on, will we be able to get somewhat of a summary of resident comments? How many in total you received? Uh, the percentage of, you know, because I think last time we found that there were a lot of comments on very specific areas. Um, and so be helpful to kind of know, what are the, the main concerns? And how do we, what was the outcome in terms of how it's reflected in the?
Short answer is yes, we have, um, we, you know, we have already been working on, um, summary documents of the, um, both the, there was sort of a collective resident leader comment that was already received on this. So we've already been working on a summary document responses to, to all of those, um, as well as we received, um, some collective advocate comments as well as some individual comments. So we are, we're working on all that. And so we can give, try to give you, um, I think last time there were some, you know, very high-level summaries, but we're, we're also looking on what I'll call sort of a specific, like, side-by-side matrix. Like, you know, you said you would prefer for this to be eighty days instead of ninety days, and this is our response and why, you know, that kind of, that kind of detail as well. So we'll have both. You can have the long version and the shorter.
Well, well, we have a, um, just a thought, would it be helpful to do an education symposium before the July vote or something where we can really kind of dig in on that with that? I, I don't know if other board members could also find that helpful, but I think it'd be helpful to kind of dig in on what those comments were to make sure that, that we know and that we're making it really informed.
I mean, we, we certainly can. We had done, we had done a bit of an education symposium on the A C O P, I think, last year before we sort of put it out, so we can do a part, part two.
Okay.
But focused on the comments.
Yeah, I think, I think we can do that.
And how we responded to those.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
We can, we can do something like that. It would just be de- definitely more educational than policy discussions. But yeah, we can, we can do that in terms of our, our, for educational symposiums, if it's, if it's, yeah.
This is F Y, uh, the board meeting in July night. That's going to be tight because you're running, running around for July too. And to get you guys the comments that, that will be substantive. It's probably going to happen, happen at the very end of June or at first beginning of July, just, you know, from a scheduling standpoint, that's all.
Okay, okay, all right.
And I want to share that, you know, the A C O P plan was discussed and, um, Amy did a presentation to the resident leaders at last month's Resident Service Committee meeting as well. And it all, and she also did a presentation to the resident leaders at the Block by Block meeting. Um, a lot of times when leaders are invited to the Block by Block, those who are not in attendance miss a lot of great information that we are in partnership with D C H A in educating the leaders as well as any commissioners that's welcome to attend. So a lot of times, people don't know what actually take place in the Block by Block meetings. We are constantly sharing, um, concerns with D C H A in collaboration on what's wanted in the A C O P plan, how long we think the A C O P plan should be extended. Forty-five days is a start. Three months was the recommended, the last director's term. We shared these same concerns that three months was better just to understand the language and what's actually happening with the A C O P plan that determines the livelihood and policy of residents. So just for the record, this Commissioner Blackson, I just wanted to share that.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Blackson. Okay, with that, uh, I'll entertain a, a motion to approve Resolution twenty-five dash eleven to extend the A C O P.
A move.
Second.
Second.
Uh, we have a roll call vote.
Sure. Commissioner Blackson?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones? Thank you. Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Stella?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Dickerson?
Yes.
Thank you. Chairman Skinner?
Yes.
Resolutions approved.
Okay. So next we have, um, there are two resolutions, twenty-five twelve and twenty-five thirteen, where, uh, uh, staff is asking the board to approve, uh, consulting services to help with both public housing, uh, operations and, uh, uh, housing choice voucher operations. And I'm looking at, uh, Ms. Whitcliff, who I think is the expert on, on these, uh, two, uh, proposed contracts. Uh, so I'm going to ask her to, to talk about Resolution twenty-five dash twelve regarding public house.
Yeah, so twenty-five twelve is authorizing execution of contracts for public housing. And these consulting services will assist in capacity building for our staff. As you know, when Director and I came on, um, there's a backlog of recertifications. As, uh, Ms. Towns stated, ledgers need to be reviewed, um, and reconciled. So this, uh, consulting services will help in this capacity, uh, building with the staff. Staff needs to keep moving their, their current work, um, load moving and going forward. This is going to assist us in the backlog. Also, as Director, uh, talked about, we know that the waitlist, public housing waitlist needs to open soon. So, uh, the consulting services as well, as well will assist us in, um, the opening of the public housing site-based waitlist and management of that. So I, we have, they received three proposals. I'm looking at this, two scored, uh, that could, uh, met all the qualifications and meet the needs. And we would like to award contract for the, um, two consultants to assisting, uh, capacity building on the public housing site.
Did you tell me who's a consultant, sir?
Sure. It, um, is All Housing Consultant and McRight and Associates LLC. Both, uh, experienced and, and.
I was going to ask you, are you familiar with these two companies? Because, uh, you know, I've been around a, a long time. I've never heard of you.
I'm, I'm familiar with All Housing Consultants. Um, they actually had been helping us out in the emergencies before, uh, McRight. I'm familiar with the people, um, when we reviewed the selection advisory committee that I know they've been in the industry, the first I've heard of the company.
So, um, my only concern is just, just making sure that you, um, you know, really monitor consultants and keep track of, of the, the work that the consultants are doing versus the work that the staff doing. And there's, you know, a, a clear line of demarcation. You know, the staff is going to be focusing on, on, uh, current issues and moving ahead while the consultants are cleaning up some of the old stuff.
Yes, and, and Carolyn, senior VP will be overseeing this one.
Okay. So, um, and, and I was just going to add to that, some type of fine metrics that really says this is what the backlog is, this is how much they're clearing on a periodic basis so that it can, it can really be tracked.
Yes, we are tracking. We have that, we'll track that, and we can provide that.
Okay, great, thank you.
I guess I might be a little bit confused, so I want to make sure I'm looking at the right resolution. Um, this distinction that we're making with, um, like, the backlog versus ongoing work? Because I thought that they were going to be, like, from the scope of work, it looks like they're going to be helping us with, like, managing the waitlist and things like that, which we, like, that's actually a future, yep, thing. So I wanted to make sure I was understanding the scope of work.
Yep, I understand. So when I explained it, it was backlog and then the opening and management of the waitlist. So that's not the backlog. So it's separate scope items that they will be assisting and that will be managed.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I was focused on the backlog.
Okay.
Some additional things.
Yeah, because I'm focused on the future and very excited that you will be able to get the support that you need. Um, and, I mean, I think we've talked about, like, staffing and hiring and how difficult it is to, um, staff up. So, um, very grateful that you are going to be getting this additional capacity.
Any of the, uh, commissioners online have any questions? Okay, or hearing none?
I, I did have a caveat, though.
Okay.
Um, so, um, I wanted to emphasize that, um, and I know that this was something that happened previously, but I had asked for, just in terms of, like, property management for the housing authority portfolio, that we be thinking about what are the needs for improved management? And when I asked, this wasn't something that had been flagged. So again, as you are especially new and leading up the, the division, as you are noticing that you have, um, gaps and need to be, um, procuring services that, like, we have a heads up that this is coming down the pipeline. I really appreciated that the executive director's reporter, report actually is itemizing what the procurement pipeline looks like. So I think we're, we're moving in that direction. Um, but I wanted to flag that, like, when I had asked that question, nobody mentioned that this kind of support was being mobilized and that we were procuring for something like this. So I wanted to know that.
So I'll just, in the committee meetings generally on the procurement section, like, this has been out there for a while. So we'll do better in explaining with the procurement. I know we, we run out of time a lot of times, so we start from the back and the, and the front. But we'll be sure to, um, Carolyn, in the future, just to lay out the procurement needs and what's out there and what's coming.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, with that, um, I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution twenty-five dash twelve to authorize, uh, contracts for public housing consultant services.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Have a roll call vote, please.
Sure.
Sure. Commissioner Dickerson?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Blackson?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Stella?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones? Thank you. Chairman Skinner?
Yes.
Thank you. Resolutions approved.
Okay, and then similarly, Resolution twenty-five dash thirteen is to engage consulting services to assist with the. Housing Choice Voucher Program. And again, I'm going to ask Ms. Whitcliff to.
Alright, so twenty-five thirteen, very similar to twenty-five twelve, capacity building. This is on our voucher side. Of course, so again, this will assist in backlog of recertifications. We're definitely tracking him. So this will allow staff to continue to march forward. What we would like is for our staff to. Work on their current workload, but also get ahead. You know, we, we keep catching up. We're trying to play catch up. We haven't caught up. Some of the recertifications and backlog date back to COVID. So we understand the challenge and barriers that our staff have, so we knew, we know that bringing in extra capacity is what needed. To get this caught up so they can focus on the current workload and go on further. And again, this will be backlog of recertifications. This also can assist in any. RFTAs or raftas, if we call them, that are past what we like to process in thirty days. So it's really helping with anything that is not currently meeting, you know, the standards that we would like to see of the housing authority. So again, this was five respondents and four. Are being awarded. These firms are CBR Associates, Allica, McRight, and All Housing again. I've seen everyone. Again, I'll just say McRight was the first one, the, the staff I've seen on theirs, first time I've seen the company. But we have worked with a couple of these already, and they've helped us out in many ways, so. Familiar with these, not the company, the people. Seen them in the industry.
Questions from the board?
Yes.
Mrs. Stella.
So I'm hoping that although this is supporting HCPP, that a part of the workload and where folks can really make a difference. Is also the LRSP applications. So I want to like hear from you that they will, this is not limited to just the HCPP vouchers. But that it also includes all of the other vouchers that Anton and his shop is processing, that's first. And then the second, I want to piggyback on Commissioner Clay's comments about like metrics and what we are driving towards. While I appreciate like all of the ways in which we're visualizing and sharing data, especially in the detailed portion. One of the things that is missing is like, what are the metrics or the benchmarks that the team is working towards? Right? So we're, you're showing us what the output is on a weekly basis, but we're not getting a sense of. For each application, how much time is elapsing? And are we within our metrics or benchmark for the different process steps? And for getting somebody through the process as a whole, right? So if we can establish those, especially for our contractors. And make sure that they're helping us meet those benchmarks, that would be amazing.
Yes, so we do have those established. We'll ensure to create some slides and operation committees and, and give out to the rest of the board on that. And what we're, you know, working toward. So on the first part, this funding actually is voucher funding, but this does not mean that the local program. Will be like benefit. So if the consultants are coming on in capacity building, that does free up, you know, possibly some staff for the local side. But both, both programs are on our radar and will be.
When you say voucher money, funding, it means that it's federal.
Federal, sorry, federal voucher.
Which I guess technically is technically not supposed to use for the.
So they'll create capacity because they'll take work off of.
That's correct.
Anton's staff, but this staff will not be working on LRSP vouchers.
Right.
Okay.
Ideal situation. Any other questions from anyone online, board members online? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve Resolution twenty-five dash thirteen for consulting services for the Housing Choice Voucher Program? Second.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Sure. Commissioner Blackson?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Dickerson?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Stella?
Yes.
Thank you. Chairman Skinner?
Yes.
Thank you. The resolution's approved.
Okay, thank you very much. So we do have something that we need to discuss with our attorney, so. I'm going to ask that we go into executive session and. I'm going to recommend that the board move to close this meeting pursuant to DC Code two. Five, seven, five, B four, eight, and B ten, B ten. To discuss and to consult with our attorney to obtain legal advice and preserve the attorney client privilege between our attorney. And this body. So we need to do a roll call vote in order to close this session. So I'm going to. Ask for a motion to close the session. Second.
Second.
Second. Okay, we need a roll call vote.
Commissioner Stella?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Reed? Commissioner Dickerson?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Blackson?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Jones? Thank you. Chairman Skinner?
Yes.
Let's leave this now closed.
Before you, before you close, we will return at, let's say, twenty minutes, which would, would be. Two forty, so we'll reopen the meeting to the public at two forty. And with that, the, this meeting is closed. H A Board Meeting for Wednesday, May fourteenth, and the time is now two forty-five. The next item on our agenda, on our agenda, was commissioners' time, and we'll go around and have. And ask each commissioner if they have something to say or issues they want to talk about. Let me start out by mentioning a bit of sad news, and that is we're going to be losing one of our commissioners. Commissioner Lee, who's our vice chair, has taken a position which potentially. Would be a conflict with her position here at DCHA. So she is going to be leaving us, and today will be her last meeting. So I'm going to ask her to say a couple of words.
You know, it, it, it has been a privilege to serve on the board for the council authority. And I first want to say that I wish the residents the very best. Second. Executive Director, head of group, and the entire team here. I wish you all the absolute best. You all have done a tremendous amount of work. Over the past year and few months, and there's still a lot more to be done, and as we. Each month, you know, discover the things that you're trying to do to push forward while simultaneously working on things that. Happened and preceded you, but have an impact today. It's, it's not easy. And, and I just want to take my hats off and just recognize that it's not easy walking in your own shoes. But keep pushing forward. Keep pushing forward. And then to my fellow commissioners. It has been really great working with this team. You know, the thing that stands out most to me is that we have a great group of commissioners that all bring. Something different to the table, a different expertise, a different perspective. We don't always agree, but what I've really appreciated most about this group is the respect. Amongst one another. I think it has been exemplary in terms of. How a board should behave and how you work together as colleagues. Despite your differences, but with a focus on the mission and on the end impact. And so. With that said, again, it has been a privilege and an honor, and, and I wish everyone the best.
So Commissioner Lee, I just want to thank you for your contributions over the years and for. Your being able to, as vice chair, stand in for me on a couple of occasions when I was not able to make meetings, but. I'm, I'm most importantly, value your, your input when I've called you late at night. And wanted to talk about an issue. You were always there, always responsive, so I just wanted to let you know how much I appreciate. And, and look forward to, to working with you going forward, because I'm sure we'll be touching base along the way.
Yes, yes.
Any else, anyone else want to?
Well, it's been a great pleasure to serve with you too. You know, you can't let the preacher get without. Praising God for you and praising you for you. Yeah, we came in at a difficult time and you helped guide us and were a part of how we've been able to jail together and. Come up with what's best for the agency and for the people we serve. So, and your heart is there and. I hope we can get somebody that kind of comes close, but I know we won't. So thank you so much for all that you have.
I'll just also say, I certainly appreciate your leadership. Congratulations also. But, but it's been fantastic, as you mentioned, being a part of this board, but watching your leadership. It's really been fantastic, so thank you.
Thank you. It's been really interesting watching you balance a lot, because I think you had a change in, a shift in your job and work. Early on, soon after I joined the board, and so now you're shifting again, so it feels. It's very inspiring to watch as well, you know, so thank you. Been a pleasure, even though our committees haven't like crossed, but I do appreciate. Working with you, meeting you, and trying to move forward with portable housing for the District of Columbia. Thank you for all that you did.
I like the best. Thank you. I'll be sure to see. See you on the other side.
Commissioner Blackson, I just want to say congratulations and wishing you the best on your future endeavors. Thank you. Great to work with you.
Thank you.
And from that very first breakfast. I appreciated your support, and then I just want to say that you've been a strong supporter of me and, and a sounding board, so. I knew at breakfast that.
So any other comments, commissioners' comments? So.
Thank you. I, I just want to just mention, I think it was. It was Mr. Jordan that spoke about really thinking beyond just. How we house the residents, but kind of that, that whole completeness of, of their, of their growth and experience. And I think it resonated with a lot of heads nodding, and, and I think that's important. I would love to see at some point. How we can start to look at that, whether it be metrics. Or, or any kind of information that we can start to look at to start to think about, how do we? How do we think that way? And, and, and I know that especially me sitting on budget and, and accounting finance as well as capital projects. We always want to hear about, you know, how do, what are the residents saying about this development or what are their thoughts? But we aren't asking those questions often about their experience and, and, and their growth. And, and so I would love to find out how we can incorporate that somehow in, in, in our discussions in future, future meetings.
And that issue also resonated with me, and I was going to bring it up later. To staff in terms of how we try to. I mean, just focus on resident outcomes, you know, looking at how residents have improved their lives. By, by working with us, you know, we have, in addition to just housing people, I know we have a number of, of, of programs. You know, educational programs, other types of programs, but I know, I guess. Many years ago, when, when they first started demolishing the old high-rise public housing, there were a couple of studies. That were done, sort of tracking the lives of people who, who had been displaced and, and what happened to them afterwards. I'm not sure if we can do something like that, but I think we need to at least think about. What it is we can do to sort of track people's. Lives and, and hopefully progress as they be, be, become more and more self-sufficient over, over time. And, you know, we can. You know, hire somebody or some kind of researcher or, or a think tank who, who may be able to do some, some. Studies like that.
And we can pull from different sources. You got, you got F S S program, you know, we employ folks. We bring services now during the summer programs and even the winter programs, you know, so there are a lot of things that are going on that we can sort of. Pull together and then package, packages. So yeah, let's, let's, let's find someone that can pull that together for us.
Um, you know, this line of questioning reminds me of section three as one of, you know, because one component of all of this is. Work and employment and the ability to like earn money, mobility. And I thought, and. Forgive me if I'm misremembering, but that at some point there was talk about the lab. Supporting with a comprehensive assessment to help identify resident needs. So, oh, I'm, I'm glad. I was like, am I reaching?
I had that conversation with them when I first got here, and then everything else fell on me.
Capacity for them, they didn't have.
But remember also, what was the other company that came in to see me that, because they had already stumbled, Urban Atlanta, Urban Atlanta, right? So yeah, we'll circle back. We, we have some sources that we can tap into.
Yeah, and then the other piece that I'm also remembering and thinking about, because I just also encountered them. At Arm Reduction Summit is the healthcare provider. I'm forgetting.
C three cares.
C three cares, right? Like, I think that there are things that. You know, I, I was really surprised when I heard that feedback, especially because.
What feedback?
The, the feedback about like where warehousing people, but you know, because. From my perspective, what I hear from you consistently is about community and how do we create community? And make sure that we are threading community, not just within the property, but also. As a good neighbor to all of the adjoining community, and it felt to, like, it feels to me at least personally. Like just listening to you, that you're not only in tune with the. The health of residents as your residents, but you're also actually actively thinking about what is my impact on the neighborhood? How are my residents interacting with the neighborhood? How are we a resource to the neighborhood? So this idea about warehousing just felt off to me, which means that like we're not communicating. Or your team is not communicating your approach, your perspective, and how that's playing out on the ground. So I was thinking, how do we uplift some of the work that is happening? How do we help combat this myth? That you are not concerned and your team is not concerned about community more than just, you know, units.
Yes, I haven't heard one thing that says you want to keep people trapped in poverty. Or keep people trapped in low income, low achievement. I hear the, and I see your examples. We're living examples here, and I think what I would, I would hope is that. I know that it's been done before and we're doing it, but like creating a continuum. Where people can go to the farthest extent, the furthest extent of their own potential. And a sort of supporting that. It's not everybody can become a homeowner, but some people can. Everybody can get a college degree, but some people can finish high school or some people, not everybody can have a hundred thousand dollar job. But they can get, so that's, that's the spirit that I think you bring. That is very important. I know the way I grew up, I was like, and I was born into a caste system. And there was no expectation for us, except to repeat what these people I was born to in this environment was. And that's just a lie. And that's just, it's ingrained, and it has to be worked, as you well know, to help them, help people know this. And that they can go further and that there's opportunity. and that they can go further and that there's opportunity and that there's a push. I know when you grew up public housing, there probably were people who were pushing in public housing who said, no, we're not stopping here. This is a first stop to move on. I think that, that's not something, you know, people have forgotten about it or at least not. It's not something that we ought to not, um, continue to lift up and the community that we create, et cetera. So, uh, and I know there's a whole variety of people that live in public housing like anywhere else that are different places in their lives and what they can, but I just think we have some expectation and we create some kind of a structure that has a continuum where people see other people actually doing it. And that's my experience with homeownership. Most people have never come from, uh, backgrounds where anybody owned a home in their family, not just them, but there was no history there at all. And they were the first generations. And, you know, it was, it's a lie. Like I say, we're born into this and it's reinforced in us. And you have to get, you have to dispel that. You have to get that out. And I, I would love, that's what I would love is see that potential of everybody at whatever level. And I really, or at least the opportunity.
Okay. Anything else? Uh, if not, then the next.
I have one more thing. Don't ever say anything else. Or I will say I've got one more thing to say and then I got another sermon. I want to give the staff a lot of credit. I really do. And I want to thank you all. Uh, and I want to especially, I'm a, I'm a disabled.
Commissioner Clay was going to.
I really do. And I want to say people, uh, Alethea helps. I'm a very handicapped computer. In fact, you know, so I had to, I have to get help with it. Um, I can do a lot of things, but I hate that and I'm not good at it. But they are so, she has been so helpful to me and then, uh, this pal, yes.
And patient.
And very patient and loving and caring. And I, I just hate it because most people aren't. My wife, my kids, they don't even like, don't ask me, get away from here. So they, they're really, there's just a lot of things that go on that are so helpful in these little ways and big ways. And I just want to thank everybody for it. It's a great, it's a great environment here. It really is.
Okay. Commissioner Clay, did you have some? No, no, you're good.
I'm sorry.
With that, um, the next board of commissioners meeting will be held on Wednesday, June eleventh, uh, twenty twenty five at one P M via Zoom. Information regarding viewing or participating in the meeting live can be found at www dot D C housing dot org. Uh, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, the meeting is adjourned at three oh one P M.
One. Thank you.